Okay, and then you wrap it stack, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then fast forward to step nine where it's the time to appoint.
Uh huh.
Now, is that a conversation in motion in a second? Or is that, hey, candidate number one came up to the top, so therefore council recommended candidate one?
So, um, for step number eight is where the committee discussed including an additional step, and that additional step would be like a workshop, meaning that you all could either, for the ones that you can discuss in executive session, that you would have the opportunity to discuss those. Um, or if you would like to hold a workshop meeting where you all can then sit down and go through and have more extensive time to do your review, you could do that at that point. And then after that is when we would have the regular meeting where, when you all would consider the actual appointments.
So in essence, we'll have a scorecard and the workshop, and then we come to council and vote?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's good for now. Okay, recognizing council member Emory.
Yeah, on item 11, it talks about completion of oath and mandatory training. Uh, what does the mandatory training consist of? Is it ethics training and conflict of interest?
Um, so basically that includes the Public Information Act and the Open Meetings Act. That's, um, those trainings are provided by the state. And then of course, yes, and inclusive of the Ethics Commission training as well.
So we're, we're not doing any ethics training or make them aware of what the requirements are?
Oh, no, ethics training is included.
Prior to getting into selecting them for, uh, as a candidate?
Well, we do have information that we're including along with the application that has to do with conflict of interest. And then there is, there is a questionnaire for relating to ethics. But as far as actual training, that will take place on the back end after they've all, they've been appointed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, recognizing council member Boni.
Thank you, mayor. So, uh, I wanted to thank city secretary, deputy city secretary for walking us through, uh, the process, hand it to us as part of this ad hoc committee, which is now concluded. Uh, you know, and so I want that to be known that we did our, our due diligence and accomplished the goal that we found out later in the process was to just come up with this process. Uh, one of the things that I just wanted to bring forth, uh, that I still consider to be somewhat of a concern is I, my fear is that we're gonna find ourselves right back where we started with this in that this is going to require, uh, the reviewing of, of, uh, of, uh, spark interviews, the scoring, and us to do our evaluations. And, uh, what we talked about in the committee was that if you provided no scores, uh, feedback, then your scores would not be considered, not that you could not vote, of course, you have a vote. But, you know, I just think that it would be very hard for me to respect the recommendation of someone that didn't do the due diligence to actually even look at the sparking of using score them. Um, another thing that we talked about was I brought forth, uh, one of the things that council member Marula's mentioned in a previous meeting, uh, that the committee discussed, which was about, um, possibly doing the P and Z in a separate timeframe than the, uh, the other committees and boards. And, uh, we, we tossed it around and from a logistics standpoint, it's felt recommended, uh, as a committee that, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would make sense to just keep everything together. Uh, it would make things more seamless for, uh, the staff, for the council, and for us moving forward. So that was considered and brought forth. Uh, also, we talked about discussing any potential candidates, uh, during closed executive session. I know that, uh, in times past that, uh, it was stated or mentioned that, uh, because of, I guess, open meetings or things of that nature, that, uh, having these types of discussions in closed executive session, um, you know, is probably not, uh, you know, a recommended practice. However, uh, I, I did make a call during our ad hoc committee meeting to Mayor Zimmerman of Sugar Land, Mayor Sugar Land, uh, and asked him about their processes. And they mentioned, he mentioned that they do discuss their candidates in closed executive session. Uh, and, uh, the attorney, uh, was, was supportive of that effort as well. Uh, so I just wanted to, to share, uh, that conversation also. But again, it's a lot of work, uh, that, that, that goes into this. My fear is, again, we have long drawn out meetings to discuss each individual candidate, uh, depending on the number of applicants. And so, uh, I just, you know, hope that we, with this new process or proposed process, uh, can streamline what we've been doing.
As a point of, if I may, as a point of clarification, uh, the city attorney's office has not, uh, recommended or stated that the council cannot discuss, uh, members of boards and commissions in closed executive session. We've stated that the board, uh, the council can only discuss specific members. So public officials, and we've had discussions over a few weeks about who constitutes a public officials, you are authorized to discuss those individuals in a closed session. So there's a li, essentially a list of the boards and commissions that include public officials and some that do not. So the ones that do not should not be discussed in, in, uh, closed sessions because they wouldn't be considered public officials. But the others, like P and Z, uh, you would certainly be able to discuss those.
So, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. So you're saying that we can't discuss, which ones can we and can we not discuss?
Advisory, you can discuss out in the open, they're not public officials. Advisory folks like, um, terse board members, um, charter review commission members. The people that only make recommendations to this body, you all can discuss in an open session. But public officials, you all are able to go to the back.
So are we able to discuss all candidates if we so choose in closed executive session? I'm just saying, I mean, are we allowed to?
Only those for which the boards are public officials. So that would be the P and Z's, the ZPOAs, um, that sort of board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, recognizing council member Riley.
Thank you, mayor. Um, and Ejo's, can you, can you send us the list of who we can and who we cannot discuss in public?
Certainly.
Just so I can have clarification. Um, I just really wanted to make a comment and just say thank you to, um, our city secretary, Crystal Roan, and deputy city secretary, Jerel, um, Horace, for y'all's behind the scenes work because y'all really put in a lot of details, especially with this really pretty chart uh, we got to, um, enjoy in the color coding. So we just want to make sure that you guys know how much we really appreciate y'all doing a lot of the legwork for us and giving us the ad hoc, the voluntold committee, um, you know, some assistance to make sure that we could put our processes in place and present them to our whole body of colleagues. Um, and so thank you, mayor, for tolling, I mean, um, you know, just appointing us to this ad hoc committee. It was fun, I can honestly say I really enjoyed us being able to kind of work through some of the fine line details so that you guys don't have to go through some of the things, um, that, that way it can kind of streamline our process when we get out there. So thank you, council member Boni, um, who's the chair keynote speaker, um, and everything else. And thank you to our mayor Pro Tim, uh, Klauser, for all of her valuable input as well. So I just want to say thank you, I think we have done a great job and we hope that you guys, um, you know, are able to use these processes and be able to implement them. The other thing that I wanted to add is that, uh, to help us be more organized when this process comes up, the city secretary's office, you know, has stated that they're gonna share with us, put on our calendars deadlines, so that way we're not trying to filter through all the emails. Um, and that way we can stay more organized when those deadlines come up, to council member Boni's point, to make sure that we don't miss anything, um, and everybody's scores are submitted on time so that every candidate that approaches, you know, applies for these, uh, uh, committees and they have a fair shake at having all of the scores from the, uh, the council submitted. And we're not, is that my time up? But, uh, to make sure that everybody has a fair shake in having all of their scores submitted and no one is being slighted on, on those scorecards. So be looking for that on our emails as well as on our calendars so that we can stay organized. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, recognizing council member Brown Marshall.
Okay, thank you so much, um, thank everybody who put in the time, I really do appreciate it, just a couple of questions. So the way our current process works, um, appointments are, should take, uh, in July and November. So we're moving this so that everybody happens, moves to an appointment of January.
So everyone, the expiration dates would all be December 31st?
Okay, December the 31st.
Yes.
And in looking at the old process, which is pretty laid out, you know, in here, and I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with any of this stuff, so you're gonna take all of this that you've put in this chart and work it into?
Reorganize, yes ma'am.
Reorganizing in this process. So in terms of us not, when we get ready to go and do the work, um, the same scorecards that we've used in the past for scoring, are those gonna be the same ones that we're gonna use going forward?
Um, pretty much, so, uh, what, what I plan to do is take what you all approved and amended in the policy, and we will tailor, that scorecard is gonna be tailored to those amendments. So whereas you may have said before that you, you'd only needed to be a resident for one year, it's now three years. So of course the scorecard is gonna be updated to include that, uh, or certain criteria that you all, um, we, we discussed and was approved. And so you'll see those changes in more details in the actual handbook, um, that we're putting together. This is our, our foundation right here, but as far as the more detailed step by step will be included in the handbook.
Okay, I, I think it's great that you guys went through the processes of doing this, so I do appreciate it because the last time the handbook was actually updated was in 2013.
Uh huh.
So this is definitely a step forward in bringing our processes a little bit more up to date. And just one little thing in the handbook, maybe if we could figure out how we are going to score them individually and then come up with a cumulative answer that will help, I'm hoping, take away some of the backwards and forwards that we tend to go through in the back. But I do appreciate all of y'all's efforts in doing this, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I just have a comment, um, you know, uh, wanna take the opportunity to thank, uh, council member Boni, mayor Pro Tim Klauser, and council member Riley, you know, for working through with the city secretary's office, and of course, Crystal, you and Gerald. Um, mainly working through this and making sure we're put in a process, as you heard, you know, now this last handbook was in 2014, now this is 2024, so merely 10 years ago. So obviously this is an update that's needed, but more than that, and I think, you know, maybe where, where we have this policy that's in place, city manager, we, we should have this, you know, so as new council members come up, as new people get into office, or new city secretary's office, or new city manager comes up, there should be something that they can refer back to, um, you know, for consistency and for continuity. So this way that we have this in place. Um, the only question I have is, uh, I guess for Ejo's, if we go ahead and take action on this today, it'll go into effect today itself?
So there are certain ordinance changes that may need to be made as it relates to dates. Currently, some of the boards have expiration dates in June, and that is set forth by ordinance. Uh, therefore, we would need to go in and change the ordinances to reflect the changes that are being adopted today.
Okay, so, thank you. So just like the orientation and the ethics, how will we let the current, uh, our boards and commissions know that this is now, is a new process and it'll take place? Are y'all gonna send something out, or?
Um, we can notify them via mail and via email and per the new onboarding of new members, we can let them know. Um, also with, uh, new applicants, we can give them that information as well. And I think we can also maybe post this on our website for when people are asking.
So first, um, after the changes have been officially, um, made, of course, we'll work with the liaisons because of course they're the ones who work very, very closely with each of the boards. So we will work with the liaisons and educate them on what those new processes would look like. Um, and then from there, of course, we, once we create the handbook, we'll make sure that all of the current, um, in, in perspective, uh, members have portions, because that handbook is gonna be not only just, um, it's across the board view of everything, it's going to be a portion that's gonna relate to orientation. A portion of if you want to, um, apply to be on a board or commission, what are we looking for? What is, what are the criteria? So we're gonna make sure that we put all of those components together and we'll get them out to the individual stakeholders that it needs to go to. But we'll make sure that we ed, educate across the board.
Last question is, I'm not sure if it was mayor Pro Tim Klauser or council member Boni that had talked about the actual form itself, the form that the people that we send the link to for them to fill it out. Um, I thought someone here had asked for a change in that form, am I?
The actual application?
At the actual application, there was some language to it, can you?
Yeah, so, so that's one of the things we talked about heavily with the application, uh, having specific questions and information that we gather for each respective board, commission, committee because, uh, what we want to know from a P and Z person or someone seeking that is different than a ethics commission or parks board, et cetera. So I know the city secretary was, uh, in their office is gonna be working on not only that, but also having it online so that when they apply online, it'll be the same way. Uh, so it will be that way when they apply, they know the new rules, the new expectations, even for those that are seeking reappointment. Uh, there's a se, there's gonna be a separate form for the re, those seeking reappointment, uh, where we gather information from them, but they also will know that some of the changes may impact their ability to serve moving forward if they don't agree or comply.
Yeah, so I think that should be to that point. I remember someone asking about that, right, to the point. Um, lastly, no question, just a comment, um, to council member Riley, to mayor Pro Tim Klauser, and to council member Boni, I wouldn't have put this committee together if Ejo's hadn't said I could, so. I yield back, mayor Pro Tim Klauser.
Well, we thank you, we appreciate you, because we are here to serve, right? Um, so that was my first point of consideration was questions tailored to each committee. You read my mind, mayor. Um, and then the second, um, uh, I guess item for consideration is, um, how do we, and I guess we need to figure that out as a, um, as a board, uh, how do we consider, uh, open board positions? So let's say, um, throughout the course of the year, you know, we make our appointments, uh, uh, members are sworn in in January, and let's say, you know, March, uh, you know, um, appointees may have to vacate their position, or there might be two or three open positions on a board that that board wishes to fill. How do we handle those interim, um, open positions? So that's something for consideration, um, for, uh, council to consider.
Okay.
Is that a question?
No, I think you were making a statement, right? Yeah, uh, I go back to, uh, council member Emory.
Yeah, I, I believe they answered the question, but let me make sure. Uh, people who are currently on the board and their term is going to expire, they will be run through this process also?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
And we've already, we've done, we're, we're currently working on another audit, um, just to go across the board, make sure that people who are currently on the boards, that if the requirement has been, um, for them to be on, uh, residents or voting members of the, um, in the city, to be, um, residents for three years, we're gonna go back through, take a look, make sure that everyone is meeting those requirements and whatever other amendments that council made, uh, to the policy. So we'll be, we'll be working on that as well. We want to make sure that everyone is meeting the criteria that you set in place.
I got one more question, I'm sorry. What happens if a per, person leaves in, in, not in this time, but they got appointed, they leave prior to our, our, starting our process in August? What's the plan to go back and refill that position?
That's what, that's what mayor Pro Tim was just?
Right, I mean, do y'all have thought about it?
Yes, so, um, depending on when that vacancy happens, say that vacancy happens in, um, let's say like March, um, then of course, we're gonna take the foundation that we built in this policy, and we may then have to start the recruiting process at that point, but maybe not have to go through, of course, it's like step number three, that says that we have to confirm the interests of incumbents. We may take, um, go from the recruitment and then skip into the city secretary, then, um, accept applications, reviews those applications, vets those applications, and then we go into the interview process. So this is just a good foundation to make sure the core of what we're doing remains the same.
Okay, I will yield back, uh, council member Boni.
Uh, yeah, ma'am, so I think to follow up with, with, uh, mayor Pro Tim was saying and what you just asked, um, I know what, what we also discussed was, uh, people that we've already, you know, gone through this process and evaluated and scored. If we have people that maybe did not make the cut, did not get, uh, one of those open positions because either we reappointed somebody, or, um, there was just no availability, uh, from, from, from vacancies. When that vacancy does arise, then we could consider appointing one of those individuals or some of those individuals to the position instead of going through the entire process altogether. Now, if we believe that those individuals that were scored shouldn't have been even considered in the first place, then I think that needs to be identified and recognized so that whoever comes behind, uh, us, me, whoever, would, um, not look at that person as a possible viable person to serve on, on that, uh, yeah. So I, but it's a little bit more work that, that needs to be, to be done, but, you know, again, we just wanted to develop the process labor for that.
So since this is a discussion and possible action, I have one more thing. Have you all, when you went back there as a committee and worked with Crystal, have we all looked at? Because I remember there was a time that we would look at how many in district A, how many in B, how many in C, how many in D? So does this process go away from that, or anybody, or, or do we? I'm just asking my colleagues, right, like, how, what's the, what y'all, I would like to hear your thoughts in that because I remember, I'm, and I could be talking back to the time, you know, of 10 years ago when, uh, 2014 in that time, we made sure, or there was consensus of we need to have X amount of people from, you know, each district and, and what have you. So I wanted to hear from you all if I could.
We actually didn't really go too, too much in depth on that because one of the things that we discussed, um, was if we want people from our districts to serve, then we should be proactive to get people to apply. And whoever is the most qualified and that is readily available to serve is kind of how we're gonna approach that. So if that's something that the council wants to, you know, determine, we want to add that as part of the process or as part of the application process that we can have X amount from each district, we can. But as the ad hoc committee, we did not say we, we want to do that from that particular, you know, standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, we want the best qualified people to serve regardless of A, B, A, B, C, or D. You know, if I have someone or see someone that serves in District A or D or C, I'm not going to selfishly say, oh, you don't have somebody for B, you know, so just put anybody there, as long as they're from B. I think that we did that many times and we found that to be very ineffective. And I don't believe that we really had a consistent process until what I see now as something that we could at least follow and we can fine tune as we go.
If I, if I may, Ejoys, do we have that in, I know one committee, an advisory committee, has it in their ordinance for certain positions to be from certain districts, I believe, but is that...
CD, the Community Development Advisory Committee.
And doesn't the Small Business Advisory Committee?
I would have to go back and check.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure about that one.
Okay. Because if that is the case, then I think, I mean, I understand the CDBG committee having that requirement, but if any of the other committees have that stated in the ordinance, my suggestion would be to remove that so that we can be consistent with what you said, Councilmember Riley, and that's the, the people who want to serve, serving. I think we do a really good job at communicating to residents that these positions are open and those who want to serve, you know, will step up and serve. So I remember a time when we used to have to, oh, we're going to extend it, because we didn't get anybody from District A, and we're going to extend it again. And it was, you know, just belabored the process.
Yeah. Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
Yeah, no, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Boni. I think we need to get the best person and irrespective of what district they come from, because the whole idea is, you know, we want quality people to be serving on our boards and not just somebody who, whose qualification is, is that they're in District D. You know, that's, that's not a qualification. Although, no. But no, I think we need to get the best, the best person.
Right. Okay. Good. Yeah, so again, I don't see anyone else signed up. I mean, Councilmember Boni.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I did want to make sure though that as we're talking about potentially providing direction of staff, if we're okay with this, if there's anything else that did not get addressed that needs to be addressed, I feel like we tried to cover every basis in every, try to, you know, turn over every stone and see what could possibly come up that could, you know, hinder us or, you know, stifle us. But I think that, you know, we covered everything, but I just wanted to make sure that we touched everything that everybody wants to have be a part of this process.
Okay. Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
Yeah, I was just going to reply to Councilmember Boni. I mean, you guys covered a lot, and to your point earlier, we have to put in the time now for this to work very well, right? We just can't just blow through things. So that's, that's going to be the key to this, but I think we've covered a lot. Yeah.
And I would say too, to both of you, now you know the process when it starts, so I think working with communications, working on social media platforms and all other avenues, because our newsletters do come out at a certain time, getting this and that information on there earlier, rather than, you know, we know now we're, have it coming up in December and we're in November now trying to figure it out. So I, I think, I love this chart, because I think it helps, you know, everybody to understand where we're going. And I think, you know, for councilmembers that are new coming in also to, during their onboarding time, I think stuff like this is there. I think it would help people to understand that this is the process that we're moving forward. And I think it would help. So once again, thank you to all three of you, and then city secretary and Gerald, and anyone else who worked on this, thank you for putting this together. Councilmember Boni.
I'm sorry, Mayor, real quickly. I did want to also just let the council know that they're going to be backfilling these, these with dates, so that everybody knows specific dates that the deadlines are for, you know, right now it was just for the sake of conversation before moving forward, that you know what months that this is going to happen, but they're going to be putting dates to all of these bullets so that everybody's very clear on when the deadlines are.
Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
I just thought of this. So elections are in November, and a lot of the work's being done in November. So I'm thinking out loud here, how does that work, right? So if I'm voted off the island in November, is the new guy voting for board of commissions?
Well, I think we broached that conversation before as to whether we wanted to move it up to, or have everything be in July, or have everything be in December 31st. And I think that we said that, you know, the person, because there's one meeting before, well, potentially, one meeting before that person is removed from the island, you know, possibly. But we said that whoever's on council at that time would make that determination and just have to be brought up to speed, and they would be part of this process as far as consideration and appointment. So they still have the ability to go and look at spark interviews, understand the process, get onboarded by the city secretaries.
So again, if I'm voted off the island in November, beginning of November, by then I have my scorecard ready. And then in December, and we'll have dates when this is populated, but December is when we vote, the new person will only have just a short time to make a choice of who he or she wants to appoint. So it's just a tight deadline.
It is, but we're going to, we're going to work diligently to make sure that we onboard and provide that information.
Maybe it shifts up a month to make it fit better.
And I would just say, Councilmember, that, you know, even with whatever's on the agenda, when they join council, they, they going to have to make a decision or not. They can actually, you know, refrain, abstain, step away from the dais if they don't want to make a decision on that, but they're going to be making decisions day one when they're sworn in. So I would just look at it the same way.
Yes. Good point. Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much. So this question will be for Ejoys. In the event that four are boarded off the island and... Hypothetical, hypothetical. Four are boarded off the island and we have four abstentions. What happens with our appointments?
So pursuant to the city's charter, the city needs four votes in order to, four affirmative votes to pass anything. Therefore, there would be no selection if four people step away from the dais and do not vote.
So will the current appointees in those seats, will they just be holdovers?
It depends on whether they're public officials.
See, I knew you were going to say that.
So if they are public officials, then yes, those folks would stay on. But for example, TERS, and I think y'all are voting on TERS maybe next meeting.
We're bringing it to the next meeting.
But those folks, when that term ends, that's it. There's no holdover for, for those positions.
Okay. And, well, I don't have a follow up question. I'll just thank you, since you may. Thanks.
All right. So I guess my question is, city manager, do you, have you looked at this? Do you have any, any suggestions or any questions?
Nope.
Concerns?
I looked at it and no, no questions. I think it helped clarifies the process and ready to go.
If I may, hypothetical, no, this is... All right, seeing no one else on the queue, do we need action on this?
I would, I would recommend that we do take action if city attorney do agree with that.
You can certainly take action on it, but I do remember that we would still have to come back to you all with ordinances that actually effectuate the changes that you're desiring here and adopting here.
So if we take action tonight, when will you think that some of these ordinances that reflect this action will come back to us?
Realistically, probably in March or April, the prior to the current expiration of terms by your board members.
Are you okay with that in March? Because you started this process in August, right?
We have, we have some time. Although it would be nice if we could have a vote to solidify the process so we don't have to come back to that.
Got a motion, is it?
I think we have a motion.
Yes, there's, looks like you already have a motion.
You have a motion, Mayor Protem Klausser, seconded by Councilmember Riley. All right.
You didn't hear? Yes, to adopt the proposed process.
Sorry.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. I have number...
Got shit going on at work.
I have number five, our closed executive session, the time is 6:12 PM, and the city council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Thank you. City council will now reconvene into special session. And there's no action items, so at 9:12, we will go ahead with no other business, no objections, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.